2016, June 8th and 22nd of 2016. The written minutes of these meetings also remain sealed until previously opened. I have a motion.
No move.
No, a second.
A second, that's good.
Betsy, please.
Seren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Jurevic.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And Con.
Yes. Moving on, we got a truth in taxation hearing. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing to the public and the board. If you've got any questions, Charlotte can work us through them.
I hope I can answer them. Hold on here. I hope that whole slide shows. We'll go to the next one. Yeah, not quite. If you could, Betsy, do we have any way to move it up?
Push F-11.
F-11. Did that help? Oh, sure did.
So, this time of year, I come before the board to ask them to sign off on a resolution for our tax levy. As you can see, property taxes is 70% of our budget for this year. Well, for what I think will be next year's. And that's the cornerstone of our finances. So, it's important that we come together and adopt this levy. If we look at the -- I'm going to hit F-11 again. I guess I'm going to have to do that every time. Well, what you can't see, I'll tell you. So, the tax levy lifecycle, we do our analysis, our estimates, we try to evaluate all the different components. Tonight, I'm here to ask for the board's action. It's due to the Sangamon County by the last Tuesday of December. I take it to the county clerk. They determine and approve and provide those extensions to us. That's usually by the spring. The treasurer then collects the property taxes and then distributes them back out to the school districts. And so, let's look at some of the terminology that I'm going to be using tonight. Oh, jeez. I'll just tell you what you can't see. So, the EAV is the -- it's the property values. It's an equalized assessed value of your property. The CPI is the consumer price index that comes into play with our limiting rate and PTAL. The levy is the actual levy dollars that we're requesting that homeowners pay. PTAL is a law that was passed that allows school districts to get an inflationary growth on the prior year's tax extension and then full value on new property. The extension is what is -- the county determines those extensions. Aggregate extension merely means the previous year's extension. The one you can't see is the limiting rate. It's calculated by the county clerk. It's used in our PTAL calculations. And the truth in taxation, it's simply a hearing that we have to have in front of the community if we are going to be presenting a tax levy for this year that is 5% or greater than the previous year. So, our first step then is to look at the PTAL. And PTAL, that inflationary factor that I just mentioned a moment ago, it is the less of 5% or the consumer price index. The consumer price index is 2.1%. And if you remember from last year, that was .7% last year. So, this year, that's $584,847. Last year, it was roughly $181,000. Those are dollars we know has added on to last year's extension. We will get that. If the property tax freeze goes through, that would be the cost to this district for this year. We would lose that. That would go to 0%. So, in step two, we calculate the district's limiting rate. And we're dividing the increased extension that we just calculated in step one by estimated EAV excluding new property. In step three, we're multiplying the limiting rate then that we just did in step two by the equalized assessed value. And this time, we're going to add on new property. And I want to state that we have seven different township assessors that flow into those property values. And if you don't know them, like I wasn't sure that I knew them all, they are Ball, Chatham, Catl, Cotton Hill, Kern, Divernan, and Woodside. So, really, this is kind of a guessing game. But if we don't ask for it, we're not going to get it. I already know at a minimum, there's already $10 million in excess of $10 million in new property. But if I used $10 million there instead of 20, and then January assessments came in, let's say, $15 million, I would lose out on the ability to access tax dollars for that $5 million. So, this is where school districts want to estimate high, just to make sure that we're capturing everything that we can capture. So -- and I can't see it either, and I don't. Thank goodness, I've got my own slides with me because I think this is the slide that actually tells you what we're going to be getting. And I apologize that it's not increasing, but I do know they did some work today on that panel. And so, maybe there was an adjustment that needs to be made there. But using the limiting rate, taking it times those new dollars, I'm putting through a levy of $29,171,224. That will be the estimated levy for the school district. So, in step four, this is where we're estimating, are we greater than 5%? Was this hearing really necessary? And it wasn't necessary because we are at 4.74, which is roughly exactly where we were at last year. And although a truth in taxation hearing would not have been required for tonight, I think it's important just to continue it. We've been doing it all along, so it's just part of our process. I think it's also important tonight because I wasn't able to do the tentative levy presentation last month. I was not here. And so, it's kind of nice to be able to give the presentation at the same time that I'm giving the truth in taxation hearing. So, if community members showed up for this hearing, they would actually be getting this that they didn't receive last year because it was in November. So, in step five, we're actually prorating -- and there's that nice dollar amount, my tax levy. That's the dollar amount we're going to prorate against all of our funds, well, almost all of our funds. Because in the next slide, which you also can't see, it shows you each of those levies. What you can't see is that Fund 90 at the very bottom. I'm not levying any money to Fund 90. And the rationale behind that, and I explained this to the finance committee, it was distressing for me this year to see that we needed to make changes at Chatham Elementary for security reasons. To me, it seemed like we can use Fund 90. We can access those monies in order to pay for that. The thing with Fund 90, though, you can't access it without the ROE or ISV's permission. And it was determined, and might correct me if I'm wrong, they came back and said, "No, yeah, we understand this for security, but you're changing the original footprint, and therefore, that disqualifies the use of these funds." So, in my mind, if anything is ever needed that has to do with fire prevention, safety, security, this district is always going to make that a priority and do it. So, why not do it at a Fund 20, which is what we would have to access this year had we not had bond money? And therefore, we're not jumping through all those hoops. And this board can decide, yes, we want to pay for this repair. We want to pay for this improvement. And we aren't hand-strung by ROE and ISV's approval. Probably better tactful way to say that, but...
Another way -- another angle is, we've learned that in non-PTEL districts, that's one of the funds. It's a backdoor way of taxing taxpayers without their knowledge, so to speak. So, here, it doesn't matter if you put it in that fund or...
Correct.
So, we can still spend it, and we still can't tax unless we tell them.
Right.
Because we're in a PTEL county.
Correct. So, I wanted to just show the EAV again and the relationship that it has with the tax rate. So, if your existing EAV is going down, your taxes are going to go up because the pool of people paying property taxes is shrinking. So, your share is going to be higher. If it's all level, your EAV stays the same, your tax rate's going to roughly stay the same. If your EAV is raising, that tax rate is going down. And that's the situation this school district's found itself in for many years because you are blessed to be in an area where the growth has just been fantastic for you. Your EAV is increasing every year, and new property is coming on every year. So, I think in the last two years, in 2015, just for the operating funds, the extension was 3.77. Last year, it dropped. It was 3.72. And those are the actual extensions, not estimated extensions. So, although that's a minor impact, it still lowers the tax rate when our EAV is increasing. And this is the tax levy calendar. And at this time last year, I also presented a slide on the impact to the average homeowner. I didn't do that this year because, to be quite honest with you, the more that I've been involved in the community, I don't know what that average taxpayer looks like anymore because of the different townships that feed into this. It could be anywhere from $25,000 to we have some properties that are in excess of $1 million. And so, what is that? And to provide it at this time of year, it's a guesstimate. There are so many things that are unknown. Property assessments, new property, new construction, final exemptions, border review, and I don't know the extension for our bond repayment schedules. So, because of that, I didn't want to put information out there to the community that's inaccurate. This stage of the game is merely guessing. It's a process we have to go through in order to request it of the county. I'm not going to know where we're really at until the county comes back and gives me those final extension numbers, which will be in the spring. So, it's my plan to come back in the spring when all the facts are known, and at that time, to present a final analysis with some historical and comparative data with accurate concrete information. At this time, are there any questions?
Charlotte, just remind me, just for information's sake, this is my fifth round of doing this, and I probably will never get it right. But every time we have these hearings, I know a lot of people will freak out like we're figuring out a way to raise your taxes. And when we do this, we aren't -- we don't have the ability to raise taxes.
We do not.
All this does for us is allows us to claim our amount of the pie, as large as we can get that amount of the pie that's already going to be taxed no matter what. We're not affecting the total amount of money that people are being taxed.
No.
We just want our section of the pie for our kids in the school district.
Correct.
So, I've always thought it interesting that we go through calculations to figure out what percentage to ask for when, as far as I'm concerned, we should ask for 100% every time because they're only going to give us what they want to give us.
They're only going to give us what the PTEL law enables them to give us. That's locked-in calculations. And so, at the time they do this in the spring, after the assessor's information is in there, they're going to be able to run those accurate calculations. I don't know why Illinois chooses to put the cart before the horse and have you do this in December before all the facts are known, but that's Illinois for you. So, we'll give them our best guess now and then wait for the spring to find out what it truly is. And I made a note here last year. My levy request last year, when I did the estimates, was $28,303,081. By the time the county finished what we could obtain from PTEL, it was $27,849,849. So, I was within $463,000 of guesstimating. But what that told me was I got every penny I could for the district because I was asking for 28, and PTEL was only allowing us 27 million.
And some districts do ask for 80% just because, I don't know if they can't figure it or what.
Well, my argument is just to ask 100 every year. You know you're not going to get it.
Well, but the problem becomes if, like, the legislators now are thinking about getting rid of PTEL, now you've got a problem. If you don't catch it and get that back in line, the taxpayers will get a massive tax increase. So, you kind of got to pay attention.
I'm going to have a great finance.
More questions?
Yes.
Could we -- you're going to go on to the next two certificate of tax levy and truth in taxation certificate? Or should I -- can I just ask you, jump to the question I have and the truth in taxation certificate? I have that. Okay. Okay. So, I was looking at this and...
I see exactly what you're looking at right now. Provides for a levy that exceeds 105%. Yes, I need to change that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for catching that.
Wow.
I would not want Steve to sign that and me take it to the county clerk tomorrow.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, yeah, okay, we're good to go.
No, thank you for catching that. And Steve, I will go make that change so that you can sign the correct one tonight.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. I appreciate your work.
Who gets to sign that one?
Nobody.
That's going to be threaded. Okay, that sounds great. That was my only question at hand.
Any other questions, anybody? Audience? No more questions? Do I have a motion then to close the hearing?
No move.
No, a second.
Any second.
Betsy, please.
Yes. Worley.
Yes.
Jurevic.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
And Con.
Yes. Okay, moving on then. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the 2017 tax levy as presented?
No move.
Take it.
And do I have to read something, Betsy?
Um, yes, we have the resolution.
Is this it?
Yes.
The certificate, even though it's got an incorrect amount on it, that's just for the signature page, right?
Yes.
So, the resolution to adopt, this is Board of Education of Ball-Chatham, CUSD number 5, County of Sangamon, State of Illinois, has ascertained and determined, and we hereby certify, that we require the sum of $21,441,647 to be levied as a special tax for educational purposes, and the sum of $4,225,198 to be levied as a special tax for operations and maintenance purposes, and the sum of $1,443,210 to be levied as a special tax for transportation purposes, and the sum of $116,996 to be levied as a special tax for the working cash fund, and the sum of $756,154 to be levied as a special tax for municipal retirement purposes, sum of $878,647 to be levied as a special tax for social security purposes, and the sum of $145,686 to be levied as a special tax for special education, and the sum of $154,686 to be levied as a special tax for leasing on the taxable property of our school district for the year 2016. Therefore, be it resolved that such amount shall be certified and returned to this county clerk, Sangamon County, on before the last Tuesday in December 2017, that the president and secretary of the board certify the tax levy in the form and manners prescribed and stated on the attached certificate of a levy. Do we have a motion? We did.
You want to read it again?
No. We got the motion.
We need a motion.
That's no move.
Okay.
Jurevic?
Uh, yes.
Um, let me see. Brewer?
Yes.
Jurevich?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
And Con.
Yes. Okay, moving on then. Charlotte, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Communications, 5-1. We got the Village of Chatham here joining us tonight. We got...
Is over here okay for you?
Uh, we have coming up here. We have Mayor Kenzie and Pat McCarthy here. We've got some other people here to help us.
We have one of our attorneys and an advisor from the library.
Okay, very good.
All right, so, first of all, I thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak on your agenda tonight. I know all your time is valuable. Joined by Patrick McCarthy. As you said, Greg Modock, he's one of our attorneys. We're here as a village to request that the school district begin the process to petition for annexation of Glenwood Middle School and Glenwood Intermediate School into the village limits of Chatham, as well as provide for the negotiation for a pre-annexation agreement on Ball Elementary School. The kind of what has led up as background, the way we got here and why we're asking now at this point, is something that's not been done in the past. Up until recently, state law prevented a village from annexing across a waterway. Recent changes in legislation passed and signed by the governor this year, which will become effective January, allow now for a village to annex across a waterway. Our barrier to being able to accomplish this in the past has always been Lake Springfield along the Esquers. And that's been our kind of an artificial barrier for the village to take in the school districts. What it's caused along the way is having to work with the village and the schools as to what rates we can charge for water services, how we would structure our police department, being the responders and patrolling in the areas of those schools with -- and given our proximity, it's always made sense to have the closest police force patrolling those school districts and going out to Ball and doing that. With the law changing and now allowing for us to be able to annex that property as contiguous to the Village of Chatham, we can eliminate some of those barriers that have kind of artificially been placed in front of us. So, in doing so, what we're able to do for the school districts on the two schools, GMS and GIS, once they're brought into the village, it allows us to extend and inside the village water rate to the school district. In the package you guys have been provided is some kind of quick estimates on what kind of savings each of those schools would see on an annual basis compared to what we charge for an out-of-village customer versus an in-village customer. At the back of that package, you see a current copy of the intergovernmental agreement for policing that exists between the school district and the village, which will come up and have to renew in January. That will also eliminate some of the need for that, too. Being inside the village limits would put GMS and GIS already within the realm of where we're policing anyway. So, there's some additional savings for the school district there. So, we brought those things as we analyzed the law changes. What effect would this have on the village? What effect could it have on the school district? And we see an opportunity that the village and the school district can continue to further the ways that they work together and cooperate and coordinate services. And this becomes a good opportunity for us as the village to offer that if the schools would indeed become annexed into the village. So, I know that's quick and a lot of information that's thrown in you, and you probably have questions that I'm more than happy to try to answer. But I also brought Pat and the attorney for any of them that I can't answer.
Go ahead, Phil.
Oh, I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? I'll wait my turn.
Why don't you get it started, too?
Okay. Okay. Okay, my first question is, when these two schools are annexed, does that mean we get to maintain our current suppliers of electricity and gas?
Correct. Currently, the suppliers for GMS and GIS, the village provides water.
Right.
Sewer Services provide via the Sangamon County Reclamation District.
Right.
Rural Electric Convenience Cooperation is your electric provider, and Amren for the gas. We have existing agreements with Rural Electric Convenience Co-op, and I refer to them RECC.
Yeah, right, RECC.
Just to go faster, delineate who's got service areas. So, there's a map that's been agreed to between the Village of Chatham and RECC as to which areas of services. Every five years, that renews between the village and RECC to reset those rates. And I can understand, you know, one concern that may come up is, okay, when it comes to time to renew, you know, what might happen. Logistically speaking and kind of reality-wise, the village doesn't currently have the infrastructure to go in and say, you know, "Look, now we can provide electricity for the schools," nor would we force that electricity for the schools. It would have to come to a spot where at some point down the road, the infrastructure was there, and it made sense for the school districts to change your utility provider in such a nation like that. So, it wouldn't be something that, you know, come the moment you sign an annexation agreement with you, you would no longer be provided by RECC, provided with -- by the village. And in a lot of instances, when it comes to service, you don't even realize who's working on those lines anyway. The village and RECC has a good reputation, kind of a longstanding partnership where we've been good partners, working well to cover these areas. They have a lot of territory that's actually within the village limits already that they're the provider for. So, there's a strong working relationship between the two of them.
Is there anybody from RECC here? Okay. I'm TO.
Would we -- we wouldn't have any choice if that agreement came up again?
Well, you would have a choice.
Yeah.
Supply our electric?
The supply choice would be there, and that's kind of what I say. Right now, you know, our nearest three-phase electric line would be up near Gordon Drive. So, just speaking kind of out of the cuff a little bit, the cost for us to extend an electric line down to feed those schools would, in general, be very prohibitive to a spot where it would make any sense either for us or for you guys to do that. Now, I wouldn't say in the future that there's -- comes a point in time where we're providing service in the area, and it makes sense for you to make a choice at that point in time because you've got a financial benefit to do so. But I don't foresee the village being able to offer that, you know, at any time in the near future.
Okay, then I have a question. If we are annexed, would we even have a choice? I mean, I guess you could listen to us and say, "Well, we'd really like to stay with RECC." But you would...
Susan, what I don't foresee in anywhere in the near future is us even being able to offer it as an option for the school to consider.
Okay.
It wouldn't be forced. Right now, RECC owns the infrastructure that is in that area.
Okay.
As well as, you know, several residential areas that are over there. So, they own that infrastructure. We'd have to be able to lay all that infrastructure ourselves.
Okay.
I would assume the school district has a service agreement with RECC. I'm not sure when that expires. But when that expires, or when it comes up for renewal, if there's an alternative there, then you have the chance to look at that alternative.
Yeah.
It'd be our choice.
Yeah, and you got to pick your...
But there has to be an alternative. You can't just set pirate lines up overnight. It takes a lot of planning.
Takes a lot of time and a lot of money.
Okay. Now, what I -- you made the reference, pre-annexation of Ball.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, talk to us a little bit more about Ball because, you know, so far, the focus has just been on GIS, GMS. But obviously, Ball, I mean, Ball has been part of your horizon. So, what's the situation on Ball?
We are about to begin a comprehensive planning process for the Village of Chatham.
Right.
So, similar to the process that you've been going through with your long-range plan, we're going to go and look at land use for the next 15 to 20 years within the village. Included in that overview, when you go through a comprehensive plan as municipality, you look to unincorporated areas that are within a mile and a half radius outside of your village. So, Ball falling into that radius starts to make us look, okay, what, you know, what should be going on in that direction? The request to pre-annex Ball gives us an opportunity to better plan for what we as a village would be doing in that direction.
So, that request would also come as part of all of the legal papers, let's say, if we decide to do that. Is that correct?
Two separate processes. The intermediate school and the middle school.
Okay.
Would be a straight annexation.
Okay.
Which means it's, you know, you go through your hearings.
Right.
If you'd like to hear the gritty details, I would defer to Greg at that point in time to go through the process. A pre-annexation agreement sets a time period that says, if at any point in the length of this agreement, the village actually becomes contiguous to the property, so we would abut to it.
Mm-hmm.
At that point in time, we don't have to come back and go through this again. We've already decided, here's the terms, here's why, you know, why we would want to do it and what conditions we want to set up. So, it's kind of requests us, as we're all in this thought process right now, establish where we're going to go and what that direction would be. It assists us in putting together our comprehensive plan as we start to look at facilities, transportation, and all that that goes into our comprehensive planning process to kind of know the indication of what the district's intention is.
So, really, there would be two legal documents.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
One would be straight annexation, and one would be pre-annexation, and there'd be... Okay, so then my next question is, you know, in the past, when the district, and I don't know of some specific cases where this is a case, in the past, when an entity or a request is made before the school board representing taxpayers and the school district, and the request is primarily motivated by separate reasons, we have successfully negotiated having that party pay for our legal expenses. Would that be the case for this circumstance or not?
In many of the documentation that's going on, if the village is willing to help, and that's why Greg is here, to kind of work through the paperwork, you're always going to want to have your experts take a look at it and make sure that they agree that everything that's being put down. I highly recommend that.
Well, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, yes, we will certainly have our attorneys look at all the paperwork from our perspective, but I'm also saying that in circumstances in the past, we've submitted the bill to that party as part of an understanding. So is that something that you would have to talk to your council members about?
Well, not knowing not knowing your attorneys and how long they want to look at it, that would kind of become the caveat. But I think tonight, you know, what we're looking for is an indication that, yes, this is a direction that the school is willing to explore with the village, and then to kind of authorize us to begin to have that kind of conversation between whether it's myself and Dr. Wood, or our legal teams to say, you know, okay, here's the points that we need to iron out between all of the interested parties to make sure that we've got this documented correctly and can proceed. That's what we're looking for tonight.
So the answer's no.
The answer's not no, Susan. It's not a question I think I can answer.
Yeah. When, remember when...
Recently?
Yeah, when that family wanted to be annexed to the Rochester.
Oh.
They paid for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Greg, I don't want to put you on the spot. How many hours would you think?
For review or for drafting and reviewing? It depends on how extensive the annexation agreement is and the pre-annexation agreement. I would think that the annexation would be quicker than the pre-annexation because there's less to go through. I mean, there's not easements or anything, so under 10 hours.
Yeah, it's not it's not going to be a substantial problem for us.
It's simpler to go, you know, when we annex the high schools and the elementary school property.
Okay.
So most of the most of the work that's already, we need to be done, we've got or done before in some fashion, so.
Yeah, and you guys do this all the time. This is nothing new.
Yeah, so annexation is not a new avenue for us, so.
Who are the current suppliers at Ball?
The, let's see.
AMRIN and REA.
Is it REA or R-E-C-C?
Same.
Same, it's the same, yeah.
And AMRIN.
And CWP is the water supplier out there. And what we would say in an annexation agreement, similar to what our discussion was with the electricity, it's not our intention to come here today and try to take over utilities. What we want is the school district to have the options, and when the times come, make the decisions that best benefit the school district. We have mains that are in that area, but it has to make sense for everybody involved in it. If it doesn't make the sense for the school district, you know, stick with what you have, so.
So I get that you want, like, I'm a businessman, I get it. You want to cross and go east. What are we missing? Is there anything we're missing?
What we what kind of drives us and why we pursue the schools and talking about certain annexations, earlier in the year and in the last year, one of the things you may have read in the newspaper was the discussion as parcels were pulled into the city of Springfield, there was a significant impact because it took those out of our library district. So we have areas that are over near Toronto Road, that are over near Ball, that as they go from unincorporated Sangamon County into the city of Springfield, there's a significant impact on the Chatham Library District. Springfield's library falls under their corporate authorities, so by law, if they annex into the city, they automatically take that as their library services. Part of what we do as a village and have had a history of doing as a village is do those things that we can accomplish to kind of make a gray line black so that our library district knows what they're going to be dealing with as they try to go through their levies like you guys just did earlier today. The other piece that we've been working closely with on that is the Chatham Fire District owns a parcel of land that is just east of, is it GMS, is the farther one? Just east of the two properties that we're talking about.
GIS.
GIS. They've come to the village expressing their interest to be able to annex the parcel of land that they own into the village. We have to be contiguous to that parcel, so we have to make our way down that line to be able to provide what the fire district is asking us to be able to do, too. So we look at it, to your to your question, in several aspects is, you know, how can we assist the library in accomplishing their goals? How can we help the fire district accomplish their goals? And the same thing is, you know, how can we make this a benefit to the school district who's going to move through this process?
So, but the drafting of the two agreements would be from your attorneys, right?
We can make that happen for you if that's important to you. We can make it happen.
I'd rather have lower electric rates, but you know, either way.
No, I think it's...
Well, I don't know your I don't know your agreement with R-E-C-C. I know from a residential perspective, we are, but, you know, you have an agreement, and that's in place, so.
No, but I mean, from the legally standpoint, it's, you know, our attorney, we shouldn't pay our attorney to draft the language.
Like Greg said, most of this is template stuff for us because we do it all the time, so we have a lot of it ready to go.
Perfect.
You know, so that, yeah, if that's a big concern, we can make sure it's not a concern for you, Susan.
There's no reason why the taxpayers should have, why the taxpayer should pay for our attorney to do it when you all have it right on.
Just have your tax...
When you're talking about Brandon, Brandon's pie earlier, it's just a different taxpayer.
Well, actually, there are taxpayers that are in the school district that are not village of Chatham residents. So I'm one of them, too.
Which parcel of land is the fire station owned, just out of curiosity?
Right here.
That little chunk there?
Just south of Burkey Road, home road.
Okay. I guess what I was getting at is...
That's not little.
It's only little in the picture.
Or is it 10 acres?
Paradigm. Yeah, 10.
Yeah, okay. I guess what I was getting at is typically, if something goes bad, people ask later, well, why didn't you think of that, Dwayne? So I'm just like, is there something we're missing?
You know, and it's a question, it's the way I think about something when I'm going to present, is what arguments would I make if I was trying to argue the other point? Actually, been a difficult one for us to come up with what those cons would be. Typically, what we hear when we approach a landowner and request an annexation into the village's limits, the arguments that come up is, well, we, you know, that would cause us to pay an additional in our real estate taxes because it would bring one more taxing entity onto our bill. The school with exemptions, that doesn't apply in this scenario anyway. Another objection that we hear from time to time is, well, you know, I like to be able to build freely on my property and build in the manner in which I want to build. I don't want to come into the village and be subject to your building codes. State law supersedes the village when it comes to construction methodology and requirements for construction of the school, so there's another one that's not going to apply in this instance. The other one we may hear is, well, I want to be able to use my land in the way that I want to use my land. Currently, the two schools are in unincorporated Sangamon County. When the county looks at a land use or planning aspect of a school that's unincorporated, they will defer to any municipality that's within a mile and a half. So that puts for those two, both Springfield and Chatham. Springfield in the back, you're contiguous to right now via Lake. Chatham within that mile and a half. More than likely, at this particular moment right now, they would defer to Springfield because it actually touches it. Come January with this law change, we have an existing pre-annexation agreement with the Sweet Briar subdivision that is right across the street. So you'll be actually touching two villages at one point there, which provides the opportunity for conflicting land use rules. And part of what you would decide at this point in time is annexing into the village would send a clear message that says when we want to do anything that may require going through a planning commission, we want that to go through Chatham's planning commission, not Springfield's.
Alternatively, there's really no advantage for us either, other than we are Chatham.
Yeah, what you have in those packages, you have two opportunities on cost savings that we're able to extend this thing. Some scheduling there on estimates on, based on last two years of water usage, what the impact would be, the savings to the schools there on a lower water rate. The other one would be via the Intergovernmental Agreement, where right now, the district is paying for the Chatham Police Department to ride patrols to GIS, GMS, and Ball schools, bringing them within the village would eliminate the need for that, at least for those two schools at this point in time. Anything else we can we can attempt to answer for you tonight?
If anything springs up, just shoot them your way.
Yeah, if you have if you have questions, like I say, what we're what we're looking at is because this this law takes effect in January, and kind of to address what Susan's point is, you know, is an indication of which direction would you like us to work? So if this is something that the board appears favorable for, we can begin the process now and start to draw up on those templates and the paperwork that would need to be processed and have it all ready for January, when you guys met again, you know, where you could take your formal vote, but we're kind of looking for, you know, what direction does the board wish to proceed?
Can we tell you that without voting? I don't know how that would work. We'll just email Doug or something.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll communicate with the board.
What's your email address, or how do we get in touch with you?
We'll just email Doug.
Yeah, you can go through Doug.
Okay.
I can get you my, all my contact information if you would like.
Seems like a good idea, just to have it on the email.
Quickly available on the village website, both my phone number and my email address is there.
Because we talked about not following up until January.
Yeah.
Doug will know our pulse, he can communicate with you.
Okay. Any other things that we can answer for you tonight? More than happy to. If not, I would love to get out of your hair and go relieve Grandma from babysitting you. Thank you for your time.
I think we're good. Thanks for coming.
And you're welcome to stay.
I don't know why everybody leaves.
Baby sitter.
See you guys.
This is my car seat.
Oh, okay. Take your picture.
Absolutely. Thanks, guys. Okay, moving on, we we have opportunity now for visitors to address the school board on any agenda item. Does anybody wish to?
I want to talk about that annexation again.
And you're more than welcome. What I'd like to have you do is, if you could, just stand up there and give us about five minutes or so.
I need that long.
Okay, just state your name and...
Thanks, Craig Law. I'm a village resident, have been forever. I'm also graduated from here. I think it's a great thing to have all the schools within the city limits of Chatham. I think it's just a positive thing for the village. Second of all, I'm also a county deputy with Sheriff's Department, Mr. Loveless, and I've had some dealings out there. I don't know if everybody knows that the road that goes in front of the school is not in the Village of Chatham. It's part of the school, which is in the county. There's usually only four or five of us working the street, three or four, five people that work in Chatham at the same time, and they've had to wait sometimes over an hour for us for an accident that's in front of the school, whether it's involving two cars, trucks, whatever, or school buses. It's not fair to the school district to have to sit those kids out there for the extended period of time while they wait for us to get there, because we have to get every single kid's contact information, parents, we have to notify. There's a lot of work that we have to go through as county deputies in order to get that done. And with that, it puts him, I know, and Cindy, they're juggling stuff for us. It would help if they were in the village, because I was just talking to Pat about that, that stoplight that's in front of there is part of the school district's property. So if that's in the village, that eliminates, Chatham's a lot closer. I could be coming from Williamsville. I could be coming from the other side of New Burnwood to try to get there. If it's an injury accident, it's even worse. So just trying to help things out, looking from the law enforcement perspective, it would be would be a beneficial thing for the village and the school district together. So that's just...
And you're saying because Chatham police...
They're here.
Would now come.
They're here, they're ready to respond. And I know, and Randy, you can attest to this, we have an agreement with the Village of Chatham Police Department, and it's only for so many years. Once that expires, if we get a new administration at the county, and I can't speak what they're going to do in the future, they can revoke that and say, no, Chatham's not going to go to the to that school district, it's going to be the county police. Now, granted, if there's an emergency and it's all hands on board, yeah, granted, everybody's going to go there, you know, God forbid a school shooting or something involves students like that, everybody's going to go. But main calls for service will have to be routed through the county. Again, I could be in Iliopolis, Williamsville, I could be an hour away going from call to call, trying to get down here for for something that Chatham already knows about because of Randy and the other officers that work there. So what's to say when this agreement's not expired, that they don't renew it and allow the Village of Chatham to come down there and police the schools? That's one other thing, good thing about the annexation, there is no question, it's in the Village of Chatham.
Even though Wallen is still considered a county road?
It won't, part of that won't be. Am I not right?
Well...
Chatham road, we're talking Chatham road.
When municipality annexes adjacent to a township road, then that municipality takes over control of that road. The county road stays with the county. But it'd be a lot easier for us to consider taking that road if we had annexed property on both sides of it.
Got you.
So the road currently is which?
It's county.
County, and so is Sweet Briar.
Continue to be county.
We go there for calls in Sweet Briar, which we're hoping...
Right. And an annexation isn't going to affect who still has jurisdiction on that road, it's still county road.
We can sit down with the county engineer and work that out.
Right.
So that's just...
Definitely, I appreciate it.
And that's something we might want to consider as we're, because we've wanted to change that road for a long time, and the issue is that it would fall on us to do it. And this might provide an opportunity for us to have somebody else do it.
What are you willing to do?
Let the county fix it before they take it down there.
Well, they, we've talked about, what, adding lanes or turn lanes and widening stuff, and that's not going anywhere, or hasn't gone anywhere, if I'm not mistaken. I mean...
A left car lane in the GIS.
We need help with bus traffic.
I'm not sure we'd ask, though, in fairness. I'm not sure we'd ask.
Lakeford Drive.
It's, well, I mean, the stoplights had to be put in by us, didn't they?
That's correct.
We couldn't even get the county to put the stoplights in. So asking them to go through a major construction project, add lanes and stuff, has been duff years. So that would be something that if we if we were annexed and then Sweet Briar was in there, somehow we got a little bit more control over it to maybe, anyway.
Realistically, though, you don't want the road, I'm guessing, because it's... Usually what happens with the municipalities in the county is we will trade, we'll take a road here, if they help on a project there, give money towards a project somewhere else. So it's a negotiating tool right now, but we get along well with the counties, so.
Well, and if nothing...
I can't say we will take it, but I can't say that we won't.
But if nothing else, if you if we were annexed, you could be another sounding board for us trying to accomplish...
It would be a lot easier to be able to explain to residents and the board why we want to take that road if we have property annexed on both sides instead of nobody annexed out.
Would that include snow removal?
Yeah, it would. It would.
Hey, Randy, does the county have more resources to bear if there's an issue on our campus, or with the Village of Chatham?
Depends on the issue. If it's if it's exigent circumstances where we have to have people there immediately, Chatham can hold their own until the county got there. If it's an accident, as Deputy Law said, Chatham Police can handle those.
But a major incident?
Major incident, we'd have the county probably...
We're all coming in, anyway.
Okay.
Everybody.
You know why I asked the question, I mean?
No, I'm just saying, everybody's going to come anyway, including the state, most likely Auburn.
Auburn, Pawnee.
I mean, everybody's going to come together on a terrible circumstance.
Right. And our police department has worked with the county and Randy to put action plans together for all of your schools and where you would mobilize people, where you would move students to, all of that stuff. And we update it and they test through it pretty much every year.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stay just in case you have another question.
Anybody else in the audience, anything they want to address concerning an agenda item?
Sure. I feel safe with it there. The gee and everything.
All right.
Nice.
Night, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on, consent agenda items. We got 6-1 to 6-10. Is that right? Anybody wish to pull any of them? All right, then I need a motion to approve 6-1 to 6-10 as presented.
You all second, thank you.
Fatsy, please.
Burr.
Yes.
Doerraj.
Yes.
Mannix.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Ribbit.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes. Anybody wish to pull any of them? All right, then do I have a motion to approve seven one to seven ten as presented?
Some of them.
I have seconds.
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Duryraj.
Yes.
Mannix.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
You're right, it.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
And Pop.
Yes. Eight one, new business, we got approval of some course changes for GIS, GMS, and GHS. Who gets to go first?
I'm filling in for Mrs. Gregridge, so I'm up first.
Okay.
I'm going to start with GIS. There are just a few tweaks to our current coursebook. Our STEM class was our new course that we added last year at both the middle school and at GIS. We just went ahead and revisited the language to make sure to align with what we were hoping to accomplish with that offering. And then throughout the rest of her courses, the changes that you're going to see are direct connections back to our continuous improvement and our school improvement plan. We really wanted to get in there and articulate the expectation so that everybody understood what we were working towards and to keep our goals at the forefront. The final change would be the history, which is a change to the content, which is around the change in the Illinois learning standards to really talk about the use of inquiry throughout the class. It in a nutshell. You good with that? Any questions about GIS? Just little enhancements to what we're currently offering.
Thanks, Liz.
With GMS in that we really wanted the wording in our handbook to reflect our goals in the school improvement plan. So simple things like the introduction, we wanted to add a statement to reflect the social, emotional learning and how that's so very important to us. With some of the wording, course information, terminology, we wanted that to have the same wording that they use at GIS so that it flowed more as a district working together. For language arts, as well as like math, even physical education, science, we added wording to talk about the importance of synthesizing information, writing. We want every class, every class to take a role in getting the students to write and then to articulate their thinking. So for example, you will see even in like the music classes and the band classes, it talks about incorporating writing. So for example, the music class now, the first three minutes of class, they do a journal entry talking about the spirit of the music, why the composer chose to go with that sound particular movement because we're trying to get the kids to do the writing and the talking in every class so that every teacher is being held accountable to the same standards. Same would be true for math, what we want to include that reading, writing, analyzing, synthesizing. The STEM class, we wanted to update the course description there to place more emphasis on the critical thinking, collaboration and communication. Social studies, the students will see that next year, because it's our transition year going to fully inquiry based, seventh and eighth graders are actually going to be taking the same course. But then the following year, the eighth grade students will be taking world history. So that'll be a change. Seventh grade will be US history, eighth grade will be world history. But we need to ensure that there aren't any gaps in their education in regards to social studies. Also, this is kind of a change, we decided to remove what's called girls chorus and refer to it as Titan Timber. This is going to allow more students to be involved, it'll help more with the overall scheduling. We have so many talented students in this district that are way ahead of others, other districts when it comes to music. And so this opportunity is really going to help even more students become involved in music. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
And at GHS, we have, as the first one says, coursework for college success. That just incorporates more of a specific language, tying everything, every course back to the school improvement plan that we talked about as far as justification, critical thinking and those things. New courses that are added in the math courses, we just added SAT to the description. Our foreign language, we're going to offer a dual credit Spanish class so that we have a couple of different pathways for Spanish students to go either dual credit or through the AP route. A couple of new courses offered the CACC or a couple HVAC courses that our kids will be able to enjoy. We have tweaked a little bit the internship study hall peer partner program that's going to allow our regular ed students more opportunities to help those kids that may need, you know, something like adaptive physical education or helping some of our special needs kids in other classes. Foreign language, we're going to change our German III course to a dual credit German III course, which is going to give more advantage to our kids as far as getting credit with Lincolnland. And the courses that we have dropped are English, Journalism I and II, Fine Arts, which is theater, Fundamentals of Stage Production, Theater Arts. We don't, we just don't have the staff that has the background to be able to offer those courses. And then the other courses that you see, Family and Consumer Science, there's a lack of interest in that. And then for the foreign language and the sciences that are there, we're no longer offering standard level courses because if your, your standard level Spanish classes are remediation classes so those kids wouldn't ultimately be able to get their two years of college credit because you're taking one level of Spanish over two years, the second level over two years, and it really doesn't equal a college level course and they wouldn't get the credit for that. The only other thing we have is our first semester program.
Do you want me to tag back in?
Tag back in.
Betsy, can you pull up the brochure for me? Sure. So hopefully you had some time over the weekend and kind of review the notes. Dr. Wood and I have been in communications with Lincolnland as far as what kind of partnerships can we establish as part of our community or our continuous improvement plan? That was one of the actions we really wanted to work towards was expanding our partnerships and really engage the community in our offerings for our students. Lincolnland's first semester program, it just felt like a win-win with all the conversations we had. We've been working with area superintendents and other districts. There are several districts already offering this, so we're a little bit behind. And it, to me, it's exciting for us to add this to our coursebook because this is a great way for us to enhance our global offerings. So how this works is our students who are eligible to graduate in December, they have to have 22.5 credits by the end of first semester of their senior year, are eligible to enroll in this program. This, we are hoping to capture our early graduates and keep them as part of Glenwood High School. They would be enrolled in 14 hours of coursework through Lincolnland, but they will receive that coursework on campus at Glenwood High School. We're looking at housing that between 9:00 AM and 12:00. We really decided on those hours because that still gives our students an opportunity to take first hour band with us and to see if they'd like to continue in show choir. Also, by them being duly enrolled at Glenwood High School and at Lincolnland, they're still eligible to participate in all extracurricular activities for the spring semester of senior year. So they're getting both worlds. They're getting to stay a Glenwood student, but they're getting to go on and begin their college experience in a safe environment that they're very comfortable with. One of the five classes that they will take is online, it's a, it's a college success class. So they're getting that face-to-face college experience because it's Lincolnland professors coming to our campus to teach. They have the online component, they're safe, they leave us with 14 credit hours of college in addition to any other hours they've accrued through dual credit or AP. And it's just, to us, it was, it's a win-win for them to be dual enrolled at both Glenwood High School and Lincolnland for second semester. We couldn't really think of any negatives. I mean, really, I just think it's great. I think we're going to see some low numbers this next year because you really have to kind of plan ahead to be eligible for this program. But I think by educating our freshmen and our eighth graders, we're going to see a trend in this and more students want to really partake in this experience.
Well, I did an informal straw poll with about 20, 25 kids the next day after we had spoken. And a lot of the kids go, you know, if I can get my schedule to work out, that sounds like a great opportunity. So a lot of our kids are excited about the potential of doing that.
That's great. That's really good for the, really good for the students too because like I've got Bobby with the freshman year this year in college and second semester she's going to be a sophomore now. And she got credits from the school and it really helps out financially and it moves them down the path quicker. Yeah, I love it.
So I have a couple of questions. It's a really great idea, no doubt about that. So Lincolnland professors come here and they teach the course. So the students don't go to that campus, LLC's campus.
Right, the only time they may actually go to Lincolnland is when Lincolnland is in session and we are not. Because they're enrolling Lincolnland's schedule, they have to follow their dates if they're in session. So if it came down to a point where they're in session and we're not, we may move the class on campus to Lincolnland or we may go ahead and open up our building. We'll decide that when we get there.
Because they usually start the classes one week before the Glenwood, that's not anymore.
Well, we're open that week, so we would have it here. We just wouldn't provide transportation that day.
Okay. And my second question is, so suppose they are taking some courses, all these courses are transferable to any universities or only in the, Lina universities? That is my question. If suppose they are taking some courses, they can transfer that credits to other universities?
It will be on Lincolnland's transcript. For us, it will be a pass/fail. And you will get a full Lincolnland official transcript because you will be officially enrolled in their courses.
Okay.
So then it's however every other university accepts the transfer.
They're done, okay.
Right, but they are five gen eds that we looked at that most universities require and accept, which is why we selected those five classes.
That's okay, okay.
And the student is, if I remember correctly, the student is responsible for paying the tuition to Lincolnland, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so that's really important that parents know that and, you know.
We thought this first time we would kind of gauge the interest when we go through the course signups and then schedule individual parent meetings with the counselor as well as doing some evening informational nights and bring Lincolnland actually in to provide the information directly to the parents. Because we want to be extremely upfront with the expectations because these grades are their college grades. So we want to make sure that they fully understand what they're engaging in when they go into this. Right.
And also in that regard then, if a student would like to do this but needs financial assistance, that, that student would work through Lincolnland, is that correct?
They would, but they wouldn't be eligible under FAFSA because they're retaining their high school enrollment.
Okay.
So they would not be eligible for any of that financial aid that they would if they were truly only a college student.
Okay.
But Lincolnland's pretty affordable. I mean, if you go to a college that's a, you know, like a U of I or something, you're not going to pay a lot, no credit allowance.
They're estimating approximately $2,400 for the entire semester. A 14-hour.
How do they handle the, the course offerings? Is it based on the number of students interested in certain things or is it only these?
These are going to be the only five that we offer because we have to have a minimum of 12 students to run the program. And so we're keeping it where it's one day, each day is a different course. And so these are the courses that they found most of the students need, the ones that most transfer to other universities. And for us, the films as a literature class will count as the students' .5, the half-credit remaining that they need to graduate from Glenwood High School. So that one is the one that we pick specifically to go ahead and make sure that we have that so it counts towards our.
And if they enroll, they take all five or they can handpick?
Right now, they take all five.
I have one more question. Can you explain to me about the STEM classes? I don't know, STEM classes, seriously, it's a type of one course, it includes everything, science, technology, engineering, math? Or they are going to focus in one area, biology or math or engineering, something like that?
So our STEM courses that we just initiated this year at GIS and GMS are just elective. So it's really just an overall exposure to all the different components of STEM. Josh, Betsy and I are actually going to visit a STEM lab tomorrow because it's time for us to really start looking at our facilities and bringing more opportunities and options for our students. So it is really just an initial exposure for our students to get excited into that land of robotics and problem solving and critical thinking, but we're looking to really expand those offerings.
Some of our elementers are doing the programming, but also, and we're getting some very positive feedback. We just had one share today that parents are pretty excited about.
That's a good idea, yeah, it's a very good idea.
I was going to say, Mrs. Selzer held an open house to show what the students had created. One of the really cool things, and even on the website, Betsy had embedded on the view of it, the kids had created it to move and form the letters G-T. So, you know, the parents were excited about that. The feedback that we're getting is my child wants to take a STEM too, is that available? And so Jen's checking it out for us, starting to check out Taylorville tomorrow and we'll go from there.
I have two just really fast questions or more points of clarification. If, you said it's pass/fail for the student?
It is pass/fail on our transcript, but it is a grade for Lincolnland.
So for their high school GPA class rank, makes no difference whatsoever?
Their GPA will be frozen at the end of their first semester because those classes are pass/fail and if they decide to take show choir or band, it will be audit, which is still a pass/fail.
And then question two, the rate they would pay, is that the same rate that any traditional?
Yes, it is.
College student at Lincolnland would pay?
Yep.
And is this just one semester or all year?
It's just one semester, it will be the spring semester of their senior year. Right. So we, so this year we have about 15 students that are graduating early and for us, we're trying to figure out a way of how do we keep them, this to us is a way that we can maybe touch on that.
And it is true, we, we get GSA, we still get general state aid. And so that's a big benefit for us because those students will no longer be with us.
Well, and you'd have some kids that are involved in athletics.
Absolutely.
Maybe a second semester, but find themselves in a situation where they want something like this.
So is this taking effect January 2018 then or no?
No. Okay.
Yeah, right, okay.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought. I, I, that's how I understood it.
No, these are the coursebooks for next week.
Yeah, okay.
This, and this is awesome, don't get me wrong, but like for the students that want to hang around for second semester, this is their only option, right? Is for them, are you saying that the ones that would have graduated in December, they can take other classes?
We have students who have enough credits to graduate, who stay and fill up their schedule with electives. We have students who go out to Lincolnland now to take courses. We have students who have internships. This to us is another offering, just another layer.
It's a great idea.
And you keep them here to get, I get it.
What other schools? Let's, let's see, Rochester has done this, isn't that correct?
Rochester is looking at forming a cohort on campus at Rochester to go there.
But somebody's done it.
New Berlin and Pleasant Plains is collabing this year. And Pleasant Plains alone has 25 students of theirs enrolled in this program this year. Just on Pleasant Plains.
Is there a high watermark as far as number of students they can take on this way?
No, we talked about that.
My, my question was if there is and we exceed that, how do we determine who?
No, they, they are so open to working with us, they, they said that we can select the courses, we can select the timing. They just want the relationship and so do we.
I'm not sure about this, but for the science courses, maximum capacity is 24 students. So I don't know about psychology or politics, but for science courses, maximum is 24.
Well, I could even see us, if we exceed it, holding multiple sections. That would be ideal for me.
You'll handle it if we can get to that bridge, will you?
Absolutely. One more question?
My question is for Dr. Taping, back to your drops. I assume because nobody's here complaining that it's probably okay, but it looked like a lot of stuff. So, like on Spanish, for instance, there were five drops. Are we, are we dropping Spanish?
No, this is, these are standard courses. So the student that isn't necessarily grade-level students, more of a remedial Spanish and there just haven't been numbers there, so we're no longer offering those.
So a lot of, for instance, in Spanish, a lot of your students are honors.
So these are all standard level classes, we probably should have made that more clear there. But those are all standard level, so it would take, for one of those students, it'd take two years to equate a full year of Spanish. So it'd just take them a little bit longer.
And then like theater, are you saying we'll no longer do plays or any?
No, we, we have, those are, the theater, those are stipended positions. I mean, we've already had our musical in the fall. But to be able to offer those as courses, we don't have certified staff to be able to teach those specific courses.
So of these drop courses, I mean, this, is this like really a formal application of what's been done informally because the student enrollment count hasn't been, for example, in theater?
This is.
The answer is yes, okay.
Yes.
Let me help you.
Tom's good?
Any more questions? Jen Ross, thank you.
Thank you.
What do we got now? Do we have to prove that? A motion to approve 2018 course changes for GIS, GMS, GHS. Do I have a second? Betsy, please.
Yes, Mannix.
Yes.
Siren. Worley.
Yes.
You're right, it.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Duryraj.
Yes.
And Pop.
Yes. Eight two, first reading of the October press policies. Information only, a lot there, a lot of reading. That's only part of them.
That's right, you're. That's right, you're having.
There'll be more, Jen.
There'll be more.
A lot more.
There will be.
Really? Now what's the, just because press is seeing a lot of.
New legislation.
There's a new rule, Steve, you have to read each of those before our next meeting.
He signed a policy commitment.
No, I mean, read them out.
Read the whole thing?
Like a motion.
Let's get started. All right, information only, moving on then, Communications, 9-1, future board meeting dates. 22nd to the 18th. We're going to move. Regular board meeting. The 22nd, regular date, and right there, it says it may be changing, and it is, right? Yeah. So we're going to move it up four days? Yes, to the 18th, that's a Thursday.